Alrighty, folks, if you would, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, January 11th, 2022. As we gather in this new year, we have a full slate tonight, including swearing in some of our new council members and incumbents as well, too, as well as one of the members of the commission. We look forward to that, as well as the other items that are listed on your agenda this evening. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask, if you would, stand with me, please, and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I will offer an invocation for council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, we come before you this evening with humble hearts and repentant hearts and ask that you be with us as we gather this evening to do the business of this city. We thank you, Lord, for the call of public service and those that have answered it and those that have served, those that have served in the past and those that will serve in the future. We thank you for the calling that you've placed upon our lives to be here at this table this evening as we consider the good for this community and help us to be mindful of all of the needs of this community, from the least of these in our community to those that have been blessed abundantly. Let us treat them equally and fairly and impartially. Help us, Lord, when we come to those crossroads of either ideology or beliefs, that we may be civil in understanding in those conversations. We pray that you'll guide and direct us this evening, and that what's accomplished will be for the glory of your name. In Christ's name I pray. Amen. It is our honor tonight to be swearing in members of the council as well as the Commission of Public Works. And we have several incumbents that are going to be reaffirmed in their positions here on the council and at the commission. But we have the honor this evening of swearing one of our own in for the first time. Mr. Corryon Booker is joining this council from District 2, and he is here with us for his first meeting tonight, and I am going to ask him if he would to join us here in the front of the chambers, and I'm going to ask Judge Hank Mims if he would come and assist with the swearing in ceremony. Mr. Mims, Judge Mims has been the judge for the city of Greer for as many years as I can remember. We won't try and quantify that in any regard, sir, but does a super job for us, and we are grateful for his presence this evening. I believe some of Mr. Booker's family is going to join in.
I take my mask off because people don't want to stand me anyway, so. Not easy this way. You have to me. I solemnly swear or affirm that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office which I have been elected, and that I will, to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me God. As a council member of the municipality of Greer, I will equally, fairly, and impartially, to the best of my ability and skill, exercise the trust reposed in me. I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace and carry into effect, according to law, purposes of which I have been elected. So help me God.
Corryon is going to be around for a while because he got double dipped. This is sort of like being bad pies and then put back under right quick, so you got the double dipping there from the judge, so he'll be around for a while. Mr. Jeff Howard of the Commission of Public Works, thank you, sir, is going to join us
I solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office which I have been elected, and that I will, to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me God.
Lady Mims from District 4 is going to join us.
I solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office which I have been elected, and that I will, to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof, and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me God.
Ms. Judy Albert from District 6.
I solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office which I have been elected, and that I will, to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me God.
I know that there are some of you that may be slipping out to head to other places or to get small children home. We'll not recess, but we'll give you time to get out if you would like to at this point. We're going to move on with the rest of the meeting following that. So if you would like to slide out now is the time probably to do it. We're going to move on in our agenda. We have public forum at the first of every meeting. Public forum is a time that we set aside for citizens that would like to address council in regards to items pertinent to the agenda to do that. And so tonight, we have two speakers that have signed up to do that. I would ask that you simply be sensitive to the time as you make your comments and that you would address council in a manner appropriate to do that, and be aware that others would like to speak as well, too. So Ms. Jessica Monroe, you are first this evening. If you would come to the podium, if you will state your name and address as a matter of the record, we would appreciate it.
Yes, sir. My name is Jessica Monroe, address 150 Fernwood Drive here in Greer. Director of, hi. I'll pause. All right. I've been removing stray animals from the streets of Greer since I moved here in 2006, but I've also been a dedicated researcher and educator of positive animal welfare since 2014. And I am asking you tonight to please oppose our proposed animal welfare ordinances as they are written for the changes. These proposed ordinances will create an additional stress on our current limited resources. They are going to cause more animals on our streets and in our shelters, and it will continue using tax dollars to address these growing concerns. The city administration has said that much of these ordinances are being addressed to update to state code, but my current concerns and the items that I would like to address are exclusive to Greer and do not affect those updates. In fact, I recommend that those updates be addressed in a separate vote. Animal control has not been able to enforce current ordinances due to lack of resources. Our resources being our single animal control officer that has held the position for about 10 years. While our city population has grown about 40% in that timeframe, animal control issues are always a human-generated concern, and as our population grows, we must address those issues in the same way that we would waste management or utilities, researching the best way to offer these services to our residents while mitigating nuisances and stress on the system. Administration will tell you that the programs I discuss are a budget issue, so I did give them a long list of funding options available to government agencies, taken directly from the South Carolina Animal Care and Control Association website, which we are not currently members of for Greer Animal Control, in association with valuable education, funding, and resources able to mitigate animal control issues before they become those nuisance phone calls. In fact, the board president for the association, Shelley Simmons, is the division director for animal care and control, which is the shelter system that we contract with and send our animals to here in Greer. My biggest concern with the new ordinances, my biggest concerns are in the dangerous dog section, the owner limits, and the nuisance that requires animal control, acquires an individual to register with animal control before they decide to foster a new pet. But we're going to skip right over that section and go to cats because that always seems to be the biggest topic, and I think everybody wants us to have less feral stray cats in the community. Cities all over South Carolina have successfully government-run TNR programs to reduce stray cats, and yet Greer is keeping with the old catch-and-remove tactic, and our Greer residents deserve better. Our location between Greenville and Spartanburg gives us access to so many resources that we are not utilizing. Please oppose these ordinance changes and take the time to research better options and tax, to save tax dollars. I am so well researched and educated on the topic. I've done it all for you, and I am so willing to share information. So all of those that are here to oppose the animal ordinance changes, would you please stand up? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Jennifer Land.
Thank you, council, for your time. My name is Jennifer Land, and I am not a resident of Greer City, but I was asked to speak here tonight on behalf of this issue from Jessica Monroe. I am a board member of Animal Allies, which is a low-cost, high-quality spay and neuter clinic in Spartanburg County. I would like to speak to you tonight about a trap-neuter-release program for the cats in the city of Greer. In reviewing your animal ordinance changes regarding feral and rather community cat management, I ask that you consider not removing this section without preventative measures in place and protections that support TNR in your community. TNR is trap-neuter-release. This practice addresses the problem of uncontrolled cat reproduction in urban areas where extraneous cats can become a nuisance. The cat is trapped, surgically altered for sterilization, vaccinated against rabies, ear tipped for quick identification, and returned to the location from where it was picked up. The goal is to reduce the cat population through attrition and to not create a vacuum effect where new cats move into a territory that is no longer occupied because cats have been removed from the situation. Spartanburg City implemented this program nearly 12 years ago. At the time, the city was overrun with cats, and in the two years prior to the program, the animal control department received around 810 calls about nuisance cats. That's more than 15 calls a week. Since that program started, those calls have dropped to about two to three calls per week. The program has been run completely with grant and community funding, so it has been no additional cost to the city of Spartanburg, and in fact, has saved the city money since less animals were being taken to their contracted animal shelter. I've spoken with Animal Allies, the low-cost spay-and-neuter clinic, the executive director there, and she is open to exploring this opportunity with the city of Greer to make TNR available to the residents of the city. Animal Allies contracts with seven other municipalities and is well-versed in the animal care needs of many communities. Grant money is available for this purpose, so this program could run with little, if any, cost to the city if grant money were awarded. Also, at such a reduced cost for surgical services, I think you will find that many residents and rescue groups will be willing to sponsor a cat or two or more as well. To do nothing does just that, nothing. You, as a governing body, can make a tremendous change for your city that will not only save cats and do so humanely, it will save money, it will save time, and it will improve the neighborhoods of your constituents, creating less opportunity for nuisances to exist. I urge you to officially support this practice and to become a leader in the upstate, working to actively reduce the cat populations in Greer, reduce the number of nuisance incidents that your animal control must respond to, and to do this all effectively, humanely, and in the most cost-efficient ways. If you have any questions or would like to find out more, I'd be happy to discuss with you in further detail. Jessica Monroe has my contact information as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public forum. Council, we will move to the minutes of the council meeting you have in your packet this evening, the minutes from the December 14th, 2021 meeting. I'll entertain a motion if they be received. And a second. Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Danner.
Yes. Council departmental reports are contained in your packet as well, too. Administrator or department head will be glad to give you any additional information you may need in that regard. Mr. Seifert joins us this evening for an overview of our financial report. Mr. Seifert.
Thank you, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm pleased to bring you the summary financial report for the period ended November 30th, 2021. For the general fund, at that time, we have revenue recorded of $4,461,000 and operational expenditures that are 5% under budget at $12,251,000. Total expenditures for November 30th are 1% under budget at $13,035,000. Referencing the dashboards, we have an overall positive variance of $85,000 and a carrying cash balance of $8,548,000. Moving to the hospitality fund, hospitality revenues are 6% over budget at $1234,000 and coinciding expenditures of $654,000 and a carrying cash balance in the hospitality fund of $1,895,000. And lastly, in the stormwater fund, revenue received for the period November 30th is $19,291 with expenditures of $623,000 and a cash balance in the stormwater fund of $2,194,000. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Council.
David, with the inflation rising like it is, and I know we have a pretty substantial cash balance, do we do anything to kind of try to offset that, or how do we move the money around, or is it in any kind of interest-bearing accounts?
The cash balances that we have, their excess funds, are invested, yes, sir, with the local government investment pool down in Columbia.
What type of return do we get on those annually?
Historically, we've only been in that fund, I think this is our second year. You know, at the bank, we were getting a quarter of 1%, and then the money in what we call the L-GIP, is the local government fund, is 1.5% to 2%, pulling in a 2.25% sometimes right now. Not very high, but more than we were.
And that gives us access to it immediately as we need it. Are there terms required as far as the length of time the money has to be in?
No, sir, no terms for that. We have about a 24-hour turnaround from the day when we request it to where it's actually wired back into our account for use.
Others? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayorman, administrator's report is next, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you very much. A couple of things I want to touch base with you all on tonight. First of all, we are currently at 41 open positions citywide, so we are working diligently to fill those positions, but I did want you to be aware that that is higher than normal, than what we would normally run. The second thing is, there's been a lot of discussion about the American Rescue Plan Act funding that the local governments have received. We have received just in excess of $16 million, or that is our proportionate share. We've received half of that money already. We expect to have the balance of those funds, I think, later this year, David, if not first and next. But either way, I'm letting you know that staff is still working on a plan to bring you a plan on, a recommendation on how to use those funds within the limits of the Treasury Department's interpretation of the legislation. So just be aware that we are working on that and will bring something to you. The third item is redistricting. The census is now complete. Redistricting is part of what every local government in the state is going through. Put on your calendars, if you would, and I will continue to remind you about this, March 8th, at your March 8th meeting, we will be having a presentation from the state fiscal revenue affairs on that process. And it is an ongoing process. That meeting is not the end of it. It is just a presentation about where we stand district-wide. I am pleased to announce that the speed humps on Lemon Creek have been installed, and it was the speed humps that our crews actually installed, and I know they were delayed in getting that for a number of reasons, but we are about 75% lower by doing it ourselves than we would be by contracting that out. So just be aware that as a program, we're invested in and we're looking forward to continuing. Another traffic control item I want to touch base with you on is the Pelham and Snow Road intersection, not far from here. We are looking to turn that into a four-way stop. We've had a number of incidences there, so just so the community's aware, so you're aware, we will be beginning a public information campaign to let the folks know when to expect those changes. There'll be signage in the area, so be aware. And the last thing is, just actually, Mayor Danner is scheduled to speak next Wednesday night at 5:30 at Crete as a part of the GDC's platform program. So if you can attend, that would be great. I believe he will be discussing kind of the 30,000-foot what's next in the next 10 years for Greer.
It's Tuesday.
It is Tuesday, yes, Tuesday, the 18th, pardon me, Tuesday, the 18th. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Council, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is the election of the mayor pro tem. This occurs at our elections. As you see stated in here, the mayor pro tem is elected by the council of the council membership. Immediately after any general election at the municipal council, the council shall elect from its membership a mayor pro tem for a term of not more than two years. The mayor pro tem shall act as the mayor during the absence or disability of the mayor. If a vacancy occurs in the office of the mayor, the mayor pro tem shall serve as mayor until a successor is elected. As you are aware, we have done this process on a regularly rotating basis, and I will open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Mayor, as punishment for him not being here, I'd like to nominate Jay Erwood.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close nominations.
Council, I have spoken with Mr. Erwood. He is amenable to serving, and we are not ambushing him. He has talked to me and to Mr. Bettis about this situation and has agreed to serve if elected. Those nominations have been closed. We have a motion, and I will need a second at this point. We can, I guess we can consider closing of the nominations, but if you'll just make that a second, we will go from there. We now have a motion and a second that Mr. Jay Erwood, District Representative from District 1, serve as mayor pro tem for the next two years. Any questions in that regard, discussion or comments? Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Danner.
Yes. Council, I got a little ahead of myself and jumped over appointments of boards and commissions. Let's back up an item there and go to boards and commissions. We have an opening in the Recreation Association Board of Trustees. That is representative from District 2. Mr. Booker joins us this evening in his first meeting. Mr. Booker, I know that you were aware that that opening was going to occur. Do you have somebody in mind to fill that position, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and the person that-
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and the person that I recommend is Dr. Chris Strobel. She is a resident of Greer, has a young family that's growing in Greer. She actually founded, or was one of the founders of the Sunnyside Community Homeowners Association. She has a PhD from University of North Carolina, and I think she'll be a good fit for this position.
That comes as a motion. Do I hear a second? Floor would be open for any questions in that regard, comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's resume our agenda, if we may, by going to Item 2 in new business. That involves a bid summary from the Tryon Park Lower Court resurfacing project, and I believe that Mr. Justin Miller is making his way to the front. Mr. Miller is our recreation supervisor and brings us information in regards to the Tryon Park Lower Court resurfacing project.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you this evening. A community interest meeting was held on October 13th last year, 2021, to solicit feedback on the use of the lower tennis courts at Tryon Park. Based on the information that we gathered at the meeting from 37 participants and from local residents and participants in the sports and the programs, staff recommends that the lower courts be converted into 10 pickleball courts, leaving at the park, the 10 courts conversion and three hard-surface court, tennis courts, and three clay tennis courts. The City of Greer Parks and Rec Department obtained sealed bids from qualified interest parties for the resurfacing of these lower courts and the installation of nets. That's pickleball nets. Bids include all material and labor cost. You'll see below on your memo, the list of vendors that submitted bids, and the highlighted there is the lowest bid. Staff has reviewed these, this information contained in each proposal, such as references, pricing, et cetera, and our staff recommends that the bid be awarded to a better court. They have extensive history with the city and our department and a reputation of providing excellent product and customer service. This project will be paid with funds from Fund 10 Capital Lease Purchase, $17,500 there, and Fund 9 Recreation Programs Fund, $18,000 there. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the project at this time, and we would seek approval.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion or questions.
When are these going to be open and ready to go?
To resurface, the type of material with the fiberglass coatings and stuff, they need about, close to 60 degrees in climbing weather. So it would be hopefully this spring, up and running. Upon your approval, we'll reach out to the company right away and get on the schedule. They're pretty readily available all over the southeast, and jump on this as soon as these temperatures get warm enough.
Others? Comments?
Is there any other type of maintenance or anything unique that's required for pickleball courts that's different from tennis?
Not really with the surface that we use out there. We had budgeted the 17.5 for that resurfacing, and that was for three tennis courts. So instead, it's the same surface material. We would just go back and paint the dedicated 10 pickleball courts on there. The nets would consist of PVC that would go in the ground for the permanent nets that could be removed if we ever needed those to be removed. But as far as maintenance, just the normal maintenance that's due out there on the tennis court, the hard tennis courts currently.
Others?
I have one question. I know we have a big following for pickleball in the area, and a lot of folks talk about having an indoor option. Is that something that we could possibly be looking at, or?
Yeah, Victor Gym, currently, we have three courts laid out sideways, across, horizontally, across the back, the one basketball court there. That's a big option for our pickleball clinics currently. Since 2020, right before the pandemic, we introduced two-hour pickleball clinics. At the time, they were $35 for the two-hour clinic. Now they've risen to $40 for the two-hour clinic. We contract, we have two certified instructors that teach those clinics. We've had over 1,300 participants come through those clinics since 2020. So it's a big deal, and they love the indoor option because of, especially for a clinic and you're trying to plan something, you have that option for weather. So Victor Gym gets used heavily right now during youth basketball season. It's, that's all we do really for youth basketball, but during the day on Fridays, we do have open play, 9:00 to noon at the gym. The past two Fridays that we've done it, we are at max capacity. We only allow, there's 12 players on a court at a time, four on each court, so 12 players can play at one time, so we only allow 20 folks to register. So folks get ample playing time, and we've been at 21, I couldn't turn a sweet lady away. We've been at 21 the past two weeks on that, so we've been at max capacity for indoor option for open play. As soon as youth basketball ends, we go back to during the night, about two nights a week, having that open play option at Victor Gym.
Now, are you only seeing a lot of folks during the cold season coming to Victor?
It's year-round, really, yeah. Pickleball is growing big. There's local municipalities that have opened up courts. One opened up just this week in Greenville County with a 12-court option, but the pickleball participants are, it's, I know you guys are receiving phone calls as well, but that sport is growing big time. It's the fastest-growing sport in America is what they're saying right now.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, you would think this is my first meeting, and it is in 2022. Let's back up some more here. I don't know if it was a conscientious decision or not, but let's move back to old business, of which we only have one item, and that is the second and final reading of ordinance number 48-2021. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 10 Animals of the City of Greer Code of Ordinances. I'm going to ask the chief and Ms. Blackwell to join us for this conversation and bring us back up to speed. It has been some time since we did first reading, so any new or additional information would be appreciated.
Okay, so since the last meeting, there were a few tweaks made to what we presented previously. One of the issues was the feral cat colony issue. We originally presented to you that we were prohibiting feral cat colonies in the City of Greer. We have changed that to just strike off reference to feral cat colonies altogether. So we are not prohibiting feral cat colonies. As long as cats in the city are not a nuisance, we won't hear about it, we don't know about it, we won't do anything about it. Until things become a nuisance, we're fine. So we're not prohibiting anyone from participating in feral cat colonies, TNR, whatever they choose to do, they can do that. There was another, we were also prohibiting the surrender of personal pets. We also just struck all the language regarding that, and will provide, we're in the process of updating our animal control website, our page on the city's website, to reflect some of Ms. Monroe's recommendations for other alternative options. If you have a pet that you no longer want, what can you do with it? Where can you take it? So we are in the process of completely changing that to provide resources to the community. I don't recall, there was a question about striking the penalty for cruelty to animals. That was not the case. However, to minimize confusion, to make it more clear for our citizens, we added the language that governs the penalty for that particular section of the ordinance to that ordinance, and so it can be found in other places. However, we added that directly to that section, so there is no confusion there. There is a penalty if you violate and are convicted of the cruelty to animals section of the ordinance. I think those are the three, the three changes that we have made since being here last.
Just to add to the penalty clarification that was amended in this current version of the ordinance, the original ordinance indicates a violation of the code equals a felony violation. Of course, our city code does not have jurisdiction over felony-level crimes, so that was corrected and clarified in the ordinance.
I would, one more thing, would like to clarify also, there, it came up last time, and it has come up again. The section of cruelty to animals falls within the state code, and there is no allowance that does not fall within the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution, that we are not permitted in any way, shape, or form. This ordinance does not supersede the Fourth Amendment's right to certainties seize anything. There has been some confusion and some question about the language that has been added into the ordinance by our city attorney, so.
That's in relation to the dangerous dog?
To dangerous dogs, yes. There is no language in there, and obviously, a city ordinance cannot supersede, you know, the Fourth Amendment, and there is no language in there that allows our officers to just enter a home to seize a dog that they think possibly could be dangerous. That's not what this ordinance does.
So as an agency and the wording of how we're reading it tonight, this is paralleling even other situations where an officer is having to make that decision and that, that point, with the circumstances being such?
Yes, sir.
To make entry.
Totality of the circumstances is what, the terminology we use in law enforcement. So there are many different considerations we, we think about before we are allowed to enter anyone's home. It's a protected space. And so there, one piece of information, there's language in here that says, you know, credible information from a community person that this dog could be dangerous. That is just one piece of a much larger puzzle that we're required to consider before even approaching somebody to call their dog dangerous. And I said it last time, and Judge Memes is here today, we very, very rarely take dangerous dog cases to court because we are very careful, these are people's pets. I mean, just because your neighbor says they're dangerous doesn't mean they're dangerous. We have to build a case, much like we build any other criminal case, because that's what this would be. We do not take your neighbor's judgment or opinion as fact without other articulable, you know, circumstances, so.
Counsel, for the purpose of discussion, we'll hold any additional questions. Mr. Mayorman, I know you have worked with our legal team, our counselors on this. Any additional information you'd like to add, sir?
No, sir, nothing, nothing of substance. I do just want to clarify again that just in general, this ordinance itself reflects the nuisance component of what we're talking about, and more adequately reflects the service that we have been providing up to this point. And I think that, to me, is the best way to describe and truncate a very large discussion about this ordinance itself, is that we have been providing a service. These changes reflect the service that we have been, we've been providing. So that is, without getting into the details that obviously our folks in the police department can get into, this is in concert with changes that have been made over a few years to state code, and is part of our larger overall codification, recodification process, but this was substantive enough to pull out and consider separately.
Thank you, sir. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
So, nothing you've got in here prohibits the continuation of TNR by interested parties?
Correct.
If you have a citizen who has a complaint about nuisance cats, they are more than welcome to call the police department about that.
Yes, sir.
Got you.
Where nuisance calls are concerned with cats, we don't really, it's none of our concern whether it's an owned cat of a neighbor or whether it's a feral cat. A nuisance call about a cat, we're responding to regardless. That's how it's been, and that's our intention moving forward, is to respond to nuisance calls about cats or other animals.
Yes, sir.
Regardless of the definition, this is?
Correct.
This is fluffy that comes in and out of house. If it's a nuisance to a neighbor, we're responding to that, or if it's a truly feral cat, we're responding to that if we get that complaint.
Yes, sir.
Our animal control officer makes all possible attempts to locate owners of pets, whether it be a dog or cat. That is option A all the time, every single time, because that's by far the easiest way to handle all those situations. The other thing I was going to point out just a few minutes ago, the original version of our amended ordinance, one of the notable things that I believe is great is the, is strating out the language about tethering. The way the ordinance was presented before, or currently today, it prohibits permanent tethering, which is extremely difficult for our animal control officer to enforce that, because to be able to have evidence that someone permanently tethers an animal, we're not omnipresent. There's no way that we can present evidence that says that animal is always tethered. So this ordinance, I believe, one of the best things that comes out of this is the fact that we are now setting parameters that greatly restrict the ability for a pet owner to tether their animal. It literally lists that they have to be outside with the animal, and it gets more specific on what types of tether they must have, and I believe we did get some feedback on the, on some of the material that could be used as a tether, and we've added that in there as well.
The requirement to register before fostering, can you speak to that?
So, that, that is, because there is a limit to the number of animals that one can own within the city, foster caretakers of animals would naturally exceed that limit. And so if there is a home that is going to have in excess of the number of animals allowed, we need to know about it. A, in case we get a complaint, we know best how to respond to it, and B, so maybe we can keep an eye on it or determine if this is an appropriate place, if it's a duplex and they have 15 dogs they're fostering. This allows us to sort of govern limitations there.
So is there a difference between the registration requirement for an actual rescue organization that's 501(c)(3) and someone who may just be fostering for that rescue organization?
So I'm going to have to look at the exact language. I don't want to miss, miss answer that. That was also something that I believe that our attorney wrote so as to be legal. Do you remember what section that is exactly?
Section 10-10.
10-10. Yeah, there is no 10. Could it be 110?
Yes, 110.
Is it 110? Okay, so it's 110. Got it.
Yeah, 110.
107. Yeah, no, there's been a lot of change. Got it. Okay, thank you.
My question is about, is there a difference between our requirement for a 501(c)(3) actual rescue organization? Obviously, we want to know, we want to be able to give them an exception to have more than the three animals, right? Is there a difference for just maybe a household, a family, that in service to this rescue organization in their home, they agree to take an animal, that they have to register as a foster, whether or not they have any animals in the home at that point or not?
So, I would say yes. The intent here is if you're affiliated with one of those recognized organizations, and you, as a part of your affiliation with them, foster animals, I would say yes. That is the intent here. Now, you don't have to obviously run the 501(c), be a paying member, whatever, but if you are affiliated with and can demonstrate that you're affiliated with, just let us know, register and say, hey, there, from time to time, I'm fostering animals, and that way that- time to time, I'm fostering animals, and that way that, again, we can, um, take note of it for nuisance abatement type calls and/or consider the circumstances of where that person may live, or if we've had complaints there before and things like that.
I asked that question specifically, uh, it's been several years, my family actually fostered a kitten for Jessica and saved my heart, and so I know, like, it wasn't in our plans, we'd never done that even, but here's this kitten, you know, she's got, the responsibility is on her plate kind of thing, so it's kind of a spur of the moment kind of thing.
Sure.
I guess that's my only concern where, where that particular issue might be, um, and, and I know specifically like with the feral, part of, part of our issue with strike, taking the feral cats out completely was kind of unenforceable, right, where technically they were supposed to register the feral cat colony, that wasn't happening, just, just kind of a mess, so we're, we've got these people who are trying to do a good thing and are doing a good thing, but they're out of compliance with the ordinance, et cetera, because of that, so my, what I'm wondering is, do we feel like that that would be enforceable, helpfully enforceable in that sense, does that make sense?
Yes, sure, and that's a good question, um, I, and I can agree with that, um, the intent here would be to prevent, um, an organization from operating within a neighborhood and exceeding the number of animals permitted to then create a nuisance, and us allowing that nuisance by statute, does that, does that make sense, so, I understand what you're saying, and maybe there's a better way to get, to get there for us.
I think it's like anything else, Mr. Hopper, if I may, that, um, in this particular case, we'd have to know that there was a, a, an issue, and it was going to be complaint-driven, just like any other nuisance that we've got, so in this particular case, if, i- if in your case, a neighbor calls and says, you know, Mr. Hopper has five cats and, and we're limited in the number of cats we've got, that's when animal control would show up and really just educate you as a, someone who cares and say, look, you can't have this many cats, we need to take them, but register next time, and in the, in this case, we wouldn't have this issue, I think, I believe that's part of the intent, is if it's a problem, we respond, and that's what, that's what this has been about the whole time, is what, if there's a problem, we can respond without, with limits to being proactive.
Does that requirement to register to foster, does that enhance our ability to respond?
I don't, I think it, it, it lets us know where potential problems could be and head them off, so in this particular case, oh yeah, Mr. Hopper has five cats complaining, he's a registered foster, and he, that's an allowed use of that, that property, it falls within the ordinance itself.
But if I'm letting that foster outside my house and it's going on?
And it becomes a nuisance, it's like?
It's a nuisance anyway, whether our foster to foster or not.
That's right. That's exactly right.
Do you see what I'm saying, it doesn't necessarily enhance our ability to respond to that, to that nuisance in that complaint situation? And, and that for instance?
I can, I can understand where you're coming from, um, I, again, allowing, fostering is obviously something that we want to do, um, we don't want to strike that, obviously, um, because so many people do, do that, um, our intent, again, is to just try to prevent large numbers of animals congregating in one particular location, um, and allowing that, explicitly allowing that per statute, um, and it, and again, um, like he said, it's complaint-driven, and never does, I say never, I cannot recall a time where our animal control officer has issued a citation upon first contact, usually, there's multiple warnings before there's ever any enforcement action taken, and so if we were to respond to a, a foster home who was unaware or didn't do what they were asked to do at that point, again, we would educate, like he said, and, um, there would probably, not always, but be a second warning before there's ever, um, enforcement action taken, you, we write very few enforcement tickets in our animal control department, um, because he does do so much of that education.
And Lieutenant Black was exactly right, you know, assisting, assisting in compliance is a better way of handling it than blind enforcement, and so if we can help folks get in compliance, and even one of the things that's been brought up, and once we get an ordinance passed, um, we'll be able to develop an FAQ system, but it will provide those folks that may have a nuisance animal or are complaining about a nuisance animal, an alternative to reach out to some of our advocates in the community and say, look, this may be a feral cat, may not be a feral cat, but it's in my yard, can you help me get it fixed? Um, and then through their own private efforts, can work through that, again, this is about coordinating and getting folks together that, uh, can fix the problem without overly burdening our own staff and our own system.
Agreed. If, say, say my family is not currently registered to foster for whatever rescue organization, and I see, oh, this person needs a foster for this animal, it's just popped up, situation is kind of now, we have to decide, is it possible, as they're receiving that animal, we're letting, we're registering, we're letting the city to know, does that satisfy that requirement to, to register as a foster?
Sure, I would, yes, and this is not intended to make anything extraordinarily difficult, again, it's just to mitigate, um, large numbers of animals, so, if, if you're, it's intended to those folks who, for a living, or for, it's what they do is foster in and out, in and out, rescue animals, we need to know where that location is, if we, another example would be a dog bite, if we have a dog bite in a neighborhood from a dog that no one's ever seen before, that helps us, if we know, well, this house fosters animals, maybe that house, that dog belongs there, or a lost animal, or something like that, I would say that those folks that find every once in a while, I need to take this dog for a week until we can find it a home, an email would suffice, or we, we probably would never even know about it, um, and so there would be no necessary reason for us to respond or take any enforcement action.
And I, and typically with ordinances like this, Mr. Hopper, what you would do is you would say that a registration's required, what we could do through administratively is determine how that registration affection, is affected through this, and so in this particular case, if we accept the fact that Mr. Hopper shoots an email to our staff, and we formalize it through an FAQ and say, hey, fill this form out online, it's registered with us, we've got a database of where our fosters are, we know this is going on, so we can determine the manner in which that happens under the auspices of the ordinance and this particular provision.
That's helpful, thank you, thank you.
So, we are capping the amount of cats to three, correct?
Yes, it was five, and we recommended a reduction to three.
That is exterior, keeping cats exterior, correct?
I think it's total.
Total.
Let me, let me make 100%, I think it's total.
Yeah, I think it's total.
And, and that's, and the interior, exterior was something else that we amended with the dogs, so that the, the old ordinance said you can have a maximum of two dogs outside, so what was happening is people had 10 dogs, and they would every once in a while switch out the dogs that were outside, making it impossible for us to enforce, um, this 10-dog household that was causing problems, because at any given time, there was two different dogs outside, but which dog is which, so, instead of interior, exterior language, we just total.
The way the language in this one is, uh, keep, hold, board, harbor, more than three adult cats that are allowed to freely roam out of doors, so specific to freely roaming out of doors.
How many complaints or calls do you receive as an average concerning this, whether daily, weekly, or?
Cats?
Yes.
So, that's sort of a hard number to quantify, how we respond to cat complaints is, we have six traps, and typically, at the beginning of the week, he'll have, he'll have a list of folks who have requested a trap, we deliver that trap, and once that, once a nuisance cat or that nuisance cat is captured, he responds back to that address, gets the cat, takes it to Greenville Animal Care, and by the end of the week, he has gotten all the traps back, and so, two, last week, we had two cats, um, some weeks, we have six or seven, um, you just never really, you, you don't know, some weeks, we have none, so it's sort of hard to quantify, now there, sometimes there's a, a waiting list, so to speak, for the traps, and other times, we have them sitting around.
As far as nuisance calls, or do you come?
Those are all nuisance calls, so if we're delivering a trap, it's for a nuisance, yes.
And we are, there are a lot of municipalities who are totally out of the cat business, so to speak, so they won't respond to cat complaints, um, they'll rent out or allow the, um, complainer to check out a trap, and they'll sign an agreement that if a cat is trapped, they'll deliver the cat to a proper, um, facility to be taken care of, to be adopted out or whatever, but, we're one of the few cities who still participates in helping accommodate the cat trap and then the response to the cat trap if, if the cat's caught.
I hope that we will consider the, Ms. Land's recommendation of, uh, working with animal allies moving forward, it sounds like if you could take 800 calls down to two, I mean, it sounds like something is successful about that program, and I hope that we'll find ways to continue to work with the community and to cooperate and to allow them to continue those TNR efforts and, and those programs, and it, I hope that'll continue to increase and they can be successful, and, and I, I did have another call from constituent, and she said that, you know, she was concerned about our spay and neuter requirements, and, you know, to use that as, as more of a deterrent, and, you know, with, um, messages to the public and education, and, and I, I told her, I, you know, kind of like they pointed out the night, we do have limited resources, and, and at this point, we have one officer, and there's just, there's only so much we can do, but, if you're listening tonight and you have an animal, and you have the opportunity to get them spayed or neutered, please do that, this is my Bob Barker moment for the night, but, you're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I, I could tell you one thing for certain, this ordinance is not going to please everybody, um, but I believe it is a starting point, just like any ordinance we pass, it's tweakable, it's changeable, and only these people here will be able to tell us if it's working or not, um, some citizens will be able to tell us if it's working or not, and, uh, I, I think you've got to start somewhere, and this is not going to please everybody, as I said, but I think it is a good starting point.
Thank you, sir.
Others?
So, yeah, I, so I definitely trust our staff, and it sounds like you all have done your homework on this matter, but, um, but I'm still torn with the idea that, you know, on one hand, I have a resident that calls and tells him about the flea issues, because folks feed into stray cats, and then on the other hand, we have a resident here in Greer, um, who, whose wife passed away about 18 years ago, and his way to cope with, uh, his wife's passing is he has, uh, a lot of cats, I dubbed the house as a cat house, and I found this out recently, um, because I was able to catch up with him to, to, to get his thoughts on the ordinance, and, and the idea of only having three cats allowed, it's almost like picking against what child you want to, want to give away, and, and the thought of us being able to come in and, and possibly, you know, take some of these, these cats away, um, you know, it's a, it's a very tearing decision.
Un- unless, and I don't even know what you're talking about, so that means his cats aren't a nuisance.
There you go.
And so, um, if, if, if for some reason, those 18 cats created a nuisance for any of the neighbors, obviously, then we would respond, um, and educate him, help him assist him, and that would probably be a difficult decision, but if you can keep 18 cats and not create a nuisance, we're not coming to your house, um, and making you get rid of any of your cats.
But technically, by the book, somebody could snitch on them.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, sure, and, and, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's the way our nuisance abatement program works, whether or not it's animals or grass or cars or whatever, I mean, it's, it's all drip, complaint-driven, um, we're not in a position where, um, we're unfortunately proactive about these things, because, um, we have more, more complaints than we can almost deal with just from those people that have, uh, identified a problem in their, in their neighborhood. Others?
Questions? Comments?
Fine, I'll wrap up, I know I've talked a lot, I, I'll, I'll just wrap up by saying I do appreciate the effort, um, I appreciate the, the conversations I've had, I've learned a lot in the process, you know, even having fostered, well, you know, we, we have a dog that was a rescue, we've had a cat, um, you know, I get the, I get the passion, I get the care, um, I also get what we're trying to accomplish as well, and, again, there, there is no, I don't, we're never going to come up with a perfect solution, I get, I think we'd all agree with that, but you do have to have a place to start, um, I know there's some disagreement on this, I feel like this, as we're considering tonight, I, it's my belief it puts us in a better position from a starting point than where we've been, um, there's more work to be done, I would say, and more conversations to be had that I'd like to proactively have, um, I think this helps us in the, for the immediate term, I think maybe there are some things we can look at that have been mentioned tonight that can be a help over the long term, make this more and more efficient, you know, save taxpayer dollars, save resources, et cetera, and be good for the animals, too, so.
I do want to encourage Jessica them and, uh, to y'all, continue to, these efforts, regardless of how the vote turns out, um, you all continue your, your practices in educating votes, because that's how, you know, change starts, is door by door.
Final thoughts, counsel? So that all minds are clear, we are doing the second and final reading of ordinance number 48-2021, a vote of yes is to affirm, uh, ordinance number 48, 2021, a vote of no would be to, um, reject, any final thoughts in that regard? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's resume new business. With the first and final reading of resolution number 122, uh, Scott Keely joins us for this discussion, this is a resolution adopting the City of Greer annual safety statement, which reads, whereas the mayor and city council recognize that the prevention of accidental losses affecting employees' property and public will enhance the operating efficiencies of the city government, and whereas a proactive loss control posture requires that sound loss prevention measures are of primary consideration and take precedence over expediency in all operations, now therefore, let it be resolved that the city will endeavor to provide a work environment free of recognized hazards through the establishment and implementation of loss control policies and procedures, and that there's subsequent amendments and additions designed to provide protection to city employees, public and private property, and members of the public, be it further resolved, that the city will support compliance with all federal and state regulations and provide the require, provide and require the use of personal protective equipment by all employees, and to assure that all employees are advised of and understand their loss control responsibilities and the performance of their work, uh, this resolution is effective upon approval by council of the City of Greer. Uh, Mr. Keely, anything to add to that or to, uh, say in regards to our efforts in, uh, in, 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 in respect to, uh, resolution 120-22?
Uh, no changes, it's just the annual resolution we need to adopt to comply with our risk factors with MASC.
Entertained a motion to receive?
Motion.
Motion and a second, any questions? Comments or discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, uh, first and final reading of resolution 2-22, this is a resolution to update the City of Greer bloodborne pathogen standards to comply with occupational safety and health administration requirements. Counsel, you have that in your pocket, I'm going to let you read it, and it's, um, in regards to the bloodborne pathogen. You've got that, Mr. Keely, any additional information, new information in regards to our City of Greer bloodborne pathogen standard?
Again, this is an annual adoption of the resolution, there's no changes in the bloodborne pathogen standard, it's required to adopt it by OSHA.
Counsel, entertain a motion to receive?
So moved.
Motion and a second, any discussion in that regard? Questions or comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Sorry, counsel, I was having trouble getting that one loaded up for some reason, thank you, Mr. Keely. We'll, we'll move to the first reading of ordinance number 1-2022, this is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in sur- We'll, we'll move to the first reading of ordinance number 1-2022, this is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property in the City of Greer. Mr. Merriman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is in regards to the construction of a roundabout at Gibbs Shoals and West Phillips Road as part of the Shoals apartment complex that will be built. This is actually the city conveying, obviously, as the ordinance title says, portions of right-of-way needed to construct the roundabout. This, this just quant, actually formalizes that action and conveys that right-of-way.
Comes with a recommendation from staff, do I hear a motion to receive?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion.
Can you say that location again?
Gibbs Shoals and West Phillips.
So is the Gibbs Shoal, I mean, I guess the city portion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's just the city's portion.
Just a matter of information, when it's, when are they, or have they said when they'd like to start work on that?
As far as when they'll start, start work, I don't know, I think it's fairly soon because the, the request came specifically from the project's attorney, asking if we can get this on for first reading so they can get moving on it. So I think their sense of urgency indicates to me that they're wanting to move.
I've gotten good comments about West Phillips Road, how that turned out from district figure residents, I know, I think this will be a great thing.
Yes, sir.
For sure.
Yes, sir.
Others, in regard to ordinance number 1-2022? Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Item six, bid summary of office space conversion at City Hall and Operations Center. Mr. Merriman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I'd have known that our project manager, John Goganhour, and if you've not met him, he's back here, John, raise your hand, John's going to handle a lot of our project management, he was, that position was budgeted in last year's budget, as was this work, and what we're hoping to do with this work is to convert what was Conference Room 200 into office space for events, our event staff, and then make some modifications to office space over at the Operations Center in an effort to maximize the footprint for a, a growing staff. This is the bid summary, the low bid is facility solutions for $59,240.
For the purposes of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
Comes with a recommendation from staff, floor's open for discussion. What's going to happen to our candy baskets back there in, in the cone of silence when it's...
We, we, Tammy has been working diligently on a alternative plan to ensure that the proper Lance crackers and mints are provided for.
Just wanted to make sure. Discussion or comments in the same regard? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, that concludes our regular meeting, as you see, we have four items stated for executive session, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn to executive session after a proper notification that we are entering executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss three contractual matters, one's for Greer relief, one for project jobs, and one for fire contracts, it's allowed by state statute, section 30-470A2, and then also for a personnel matter, and that's in regards to administration, that's allowed by state statute, section 30-470A1.
Those come as a, a recommendation and a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. That concludes our regular meeting this evening, thank you. All right, counsel, in executive session, we have considered four matters, three contractual matters, one personnel matter. We do not need to take action on three matters, but one of them will require action following executive session, do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, stand adjourned.